Good evening, it's good to see you all here. We've got a few more than we had this morning, but the crowd, crowd is pretty substantial. At this time, I would like to introduce the elected officials that are here, in case we've got questions as we go forward, to let you know who is all here. Jerry, you want to start?
Jerry Barnes, District 1.
Becky Danny, District 2.
I'm Rob Jones, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Donnie Craig, Sheriff.
Judge.
Chief Judge.
John Worcester, Judge.
Nelson says he is for charge.
Therefore, Jordan, Chief Deputy Clerk, Court of Justice.
Is Alan Wigginton here yet?
He's here.
He is coming, isn't he?
He is.
Okay, alright. Alright, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and, of course, again, welcome you all for being here, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hardy. Where did she go? She's hiding. And we let her give you a quick overview. Some of y'all were here this morning, you're gonna hear the same thing again, but the ones that weren't here need to hear this.
Okay, good evening, thank you for coming. What we have on the board, and also I have some printed, some copies here, is just the current 2016 tax digest and the five-year history of tax levies. The, and one good thing, when you look at the net MNO digest, which is $1,365,993,177, for the first time since 2011, that has increased just slightly over the previous year. It's been going down every year. But, so then hopefully that's a good indication of some recovery. Each year when we get the tax digest from the Tax Commissioner's Office, the Department of Revenue requires that we do a rollback computation, which basically equalizes, it takes into consideration the increases or decreases in the digest, and it equalizes the revenue. The rollback rate for our 2016 digest was 7.203, and that would generate the same revenue that we had in 2015. The preliminary budgets for 2017 that have come in are quite a bit more than that, and it's going to require some additional revenue. The, of course, the 2016 mill rate and property tax collections support the 2016 budget, but also we need for cash flow, the increase will be used to offset the 2017 budget increases. One of the largest increases that we're going to have this year is our health insurance. It's going to increase 10 to 15 percent. In the beginning, we were told it might be a 22 percent increase, hopefully we are getting that down to maybe 10. We've budgeted 10. Just by the functions, I'll give you the preliminary budget increases for 2017. For general government, an increase of $120,000. Judicial, $253,000. The sheriff, $548,000. Fire, EMS, 911, and EMA, $159,000. Public works at $243,000. Culture and recreation, $44,000. And housing and development, also $44,000. And with those increases, even if that one mill is approved, some of the budget requests are gonna have to be reduced to have any sort of reserve. We need about a $500,000 contingency reserve for each budget year. As far as the 2016 budget is going, we're well under budget. At the end of July, we were almost 4 percent under budget for the year. And the county's financial position is improving. According to our 2015 county audit, the county's unassigned fund balance is now $6,352,000. And at the end of 2015, our available cash balance was $2.7 million. And the, I'd like to mention that the budgets, the 2017 budgets, when we, when the commissioners look at those budgets and have the meetings with the elected officials and department heads, those are advertised meetings, and they're open to the public. And those are going to be in October, October 17th, 18th, and 19th. And of course, they will be advertised in the paper and on our website. And that's all the comments I have, I think.
This morning, we let the sheriff speak first, but would any elected official want to speak on their budget, what they've got set up for the future, or you want Don to go ahead and run with it? Did you want to go first, Alan?
I'm good, Don. I yield my time to the sheriff.
I've heard that before. Guys, I too just want to welcome everyone. I know we've got some similar faces that were here this morning, and I know you're gonna hear some of the same things, at least from me. First thing I want to say is, it is very difficult, as sheriff, to stand before the citizens of our community when it comes to budget time. And the bottom line is, as I mentioned this morning, I've gotta present my budget to these commissioners. Unfortunately, or fortunately for me, I don't work for the commissioners, I work for y'all. And I work for 32,000 people that are living here in Pickens County. We heard this morning from a lot of, a few senior citizens and some other folks that was talking about how hard it was living on a fixed income, and what this one mill will do if it is passed. So, I promise you personally, I don't take this lightly when I stand up and ask for a $400,000 increase in our budget. I want you to know that we've been working very hard trying to cut back where we can, and not turning this into a sheriff's office budget. What I would like to do is just go over some of the increases that we anticipate that we will be presenting to the Board of Commissioners here in a few weeks. But before I do, and all the increases that we're looking at is based on the needs that we have in our local jail. Our jail, as you may or may not know, is about 10 years old. We house 140 inmates is the population for the jail. Some of you may have heard that we're housing inmates from Sandy Springs. Heard a lot of different rumors, and folks are upset, don't understand why are we bringing inmates from outside the county into our jail, which is pushing us over close to our maximum capacity. Well, about this time last year, or midway last year, we entered into an agreement with Sandy Springs Police Department, where we agreed to accept their misdemeanor inmates. So if there's somebody that's committed a crime in Sandy Springs for a misdemeanor, and they're sentenced anywhere from 12 months to one month, they can be housed in our jail. We charge them $40 per day, per inmate, to house them. Currently, I believe the revenue that we have generated this year is $335,289. We are on track. If we continue the same population that we're keeping, we're generating about $50,000 a month income from Sandy Springs. So we're looking at about a half a million dollars in revenue coming in. Now, you would think, well, why are you doing that? Because we are bringing in more folks to our jail. But one benefit, obviously, is the money that we can help generate some revenue for the county. And I've heard for years about how the sheriff is a debt expense. The only way that we generate revenues is when we stop your RITCA ticket, or we take somebody to jail, and they go to the corpse and ended up getting fined. This allows us to try to give back a little bit, and to generate some revenues without having to always go back to the taxpayer for everything. So we feel like that helps out. The other thing that we do with these inmates, we're able to use these misdemeanor inmates that are in our jail to be a part of our workforce. We use them to cook, and to clean, to do laundry inside the facility, and we're also using more and more of these guys that are out on the roads doing the work details, picking up trash, and cutting grass, and doing things like that with the inmate work detail. The cost, again, I said, we charge $40 a day. After you back out what it actually costs us to house those inmates, and feed them, and to pick them up and transport them back and forth to Sandy Springs, we're making about $32 a day per inmate. Currently, as of this morning, our inmate population was 135, and of the 135, 41 is being housed from Sandy Springs. So that kind of gives you a little bit of history with our jail. We, again, said it's about 10 years old. We've got a couple line items that I want to address tonight. The first one is professional services. Again, this is dealing with our jail. The professional services covers our jail medical services contract. These are the folks that provide our nurses and our doctor that comes into the jail and treats our inmates. We have been, for some time since we had a contract with them, they provide nursing staff eight hours a day, seven days a week, and a doctor comes in on one day a week and treats the inmates. He sees them personally, and then the nurses take care of them. They do the intake when you're arrested. They'll meet with you, do the intake, figure out what your medical condition is, what kind of meds you're on, make sure that we get that together, and then they actually give out the meds to the inmates. We have found that we need to increase that, unfortunately. So we're gonna look at increasing the number of hours that our nursing staff is coming over. Through jail medical services, they, by increasing from eight hours to 16 hours, they have actually increased, I believe, tentatively from $125,000, a $125,000 contract, to about We also are looking outside, we're taking other bids coming in, and we've got a couple other companies. The other company we're looking closely at, I think, is about $240,000. Now, they provide all the, the other company will actually provide dental and provide mental health for the inmates as well. So, we're looking at increasing our professional services from $125,000 to $300,000. And again, that is to cover the cost of the medical and the doctors for the jail facility, and also helps cover the cost when we have to take somebody to the hospital, whether they're having a heart attack, or maybe, you know, whatever their issue may be. If we take them to the hospital, then we have to pay for that, unfortunately. Another line item is medical supplies. Currently, this year, we started out at $14,500. That $14,500 has increased dramatically this year, and we're looking at increasing it next year to $40,000. And that covers the prescription drugs, and the basic supplies for medical. And I mentioned this morning, I had an inmate, I don't know how many of you may have heard, the Verizon Wireless. We had some guys from out of town come up, did armed robbery. One of those individuals, because of their medical issues, was costing us $5,000 a month just in medicine, that we have to provide. So, you know, we're looking at having to increase that. Now, currently with our prescription medications, we're buying local. We've been moving it around from one drugstore to another drugstore. One good thing about using one of these other companies that we're looking at is they have, I think, like 225 jails that they're currently servicing, and they provide the actual prescription medication. And through this company, the buying power that they have is so great that they're gonna be able to provide those medications to us at a much reduced cost. We just don't know how much, you know, we're gonna be able to save by going with this other company, if that's what we do. The third line item that we need to look at is food for the inmates, and this is inmate meals. We feed our inmates three times a day. Our cost for inmates per day is $4.59. We contract with a company called Valley Food Services. They're servicing jails all over Georgia, and some in Alabama, and they do a great job for us. Unfortunately, as we increase the number of inmates, we also have to increase our meals. But I am very pleased that we're able to keep our cost down at $4.59 for an inmate per day. They provide, one lady that comes in and helps us supervise the kitchen, and again, the inmates actually come in and do all the cooking and preparation, and then serve. And because they have so many jail facilities, we use their buying power, co-op if you will, to help keep us cost down. The final area that we're looking at is capital outlay. Capital outlay, as I mentioned, the jail's 10 years old. We've got some technology that actually, I don't know how many of you has had the opportunity to maybe tour the jail, actually see how it's set up. But our jail's set up where we've got a pod system, and what controls the entire security of the jail is called the, I'm having a moment, Central Control. Central Control will actually, in Central, you can see all the cameras. We've got 58 cameras around the jail that watches the inmates, controls all of our doors, all of our intercom systems, our lights. Everything going on inside that jail is run from Central Control. We also have an area that is in the center of the pods, where all the inmates are housed around the pod, called, we call it the tower. And in that tower, if we have somebody working in that area, they can take control and actually control everything that's going on in the inmates' area, in their pods, while the guy in Central can answer the phones, deal with the computers, watch the cameras, and deal with the rest of the jail. Unfortunately, this past year, our tower has gone down because the technology is needing updated. The company that we use back 10 years ago when the jail was built was out of Wisconsin, called Accurate Controls. They're proprietary on their software, so we cannot use anybody other than this company. So we've gone out, we've found some other bids, and I think we about have locked in a company out of Alabama who will come over and take a close look, or has taken a close look at our system, switch everything over. It'll no longer be a proprietary software. They will teach our maintenance staff and our staff how to do the maintenance and upkeep, and then we can get everything back up and running. That's gonna cost us, just for that particular upgrade on the equipment, we're looking at about $80,000. We're also looking at about a $30,000 upgrade to the camera system. We're still operating mostly with old analog system. And if you know anything about cameras, you get a real fuzzy picture, and when you're trying to zoom in and see what's going on with inmates, and the issues that we're having with them, especially when they're having contact with our staff, you know, we really need that good clear, crisp picture. And that's the reason we're switching over to the digital. Another problem we have with the actual system is it keeps less than 30 days of recordings. And in our business, we really need 60 to 90 days, because it may take 60 or 90 days before we actually get a complaint, whether it be on a staff member, or an inmate, or the DA's office may call over and say, "Hey, I need you to pull, you know, video, this is what's going on." So it's imperative that we get that upgraded. And we've got a company we've been using for a few years, making a few upgrades as we go through, but it's just not getting us what we need. We're gonna have to make these updates. The last thing on the updates with a capital outlay is electronic door controls, if you've ever been there at the jail. It's got the little card swipe that gets you in and out of the other part of the jail, the security. We've been having a lot of problems with that. We've been band-aiding it for about two years. Sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't. So we're gonna try to go ahead and get that fixed. Honestly, and I mentioned this morning, when I first met with the commissioners, probably two or three weeks ago, we had, we'd actually asked for four additional staff members for the jail. Chief Magistrate Wigginton was the chief deputy back in, 10 years ago when the jail was open. At that time, when they moved into the new jail, I think they had 27 staff members and about 65 inmates. Over the last eight years, we have cut that back to 22 staff members, and now we're up to, like I said, 135 inmates. And it's tough. You know, we're operating with our staff in the jail on a full shift. If we're, you know, we don't have any illness, and nobody's sick, or on vacation, or in training, you know, we've got five people working the jail. Honestly, it's hard to keep five in there because everything else is going on. So normally, that brings us down to about four staff running the jail with 135 inmates. In the last two weeks, two to three weeks, we've had, I think, four or five altercations where our staff has been assaulted, going in and dealing with issues, dealing with inmates. And since January, I think we've had 28 different assaults, dealing with staff, dealing with the inmates. It's, you know, we're seeing a lot of different type of inmates than what we had even eight years ago. And it's much different than it was when I worked for the previous sheriff back in the early 90s and early 2000s. You know, and again, it's hard for me to stand here and, you know, ask you guys for more money, but I can tell you that in early 80s, we were under a federal consent order from the federal courts that told us exactly how many staff we had to have, how many meals we fed our inmates, the visitation hours. Everything we done in the jail was mandated by the federal courts. And over the last eight years, we've worked very hard trying to make sure that everything was up to date and where it needed to be. We petitioned the federal courts last year, and was able to get that federal court order lifted, which gives us the ability to do what we need to do. But I can assure you that if we don't take care of business and do what we have to do with these inmates, then we're gonna end up falling back in that area, and we definitely don't need that. I'm not trying to use scare tactics, I'm just trying to be as open and as honest as I can with you. These are areas that has got to be done. You know, we talked this morning a little bit about, you know, the staff. We're gonna try to figure out a way that we can, within our own budget, figure out a way that we can get some more help in the jail, whether we're moving our own folks around a little more. Uniform patrol, we're running five deputies on the road. And again, on a good day, with a turnover we've had, cranks us down to four. You know, it may sound like a lot of people, but if you get one guy tied up on an accident out here on the road somewhere, now you're down to three. And, you know, I remember back in the day, I asked the commissioner how many people they'd send to work on a motor grader, and he'd say, "Well, we'll send three. You gotta work on it, you gotta help him. If you gotta have parts, you might get somebody to run to the parts store for you." Makes sense. Why would I send less than three to a pod with 40 inmates that are fighting, that are causing problems, that you know their history? Why would we send less than that to a domestic dispute, where we know the guy's wrong, he's dumped up, he's already whipped his wife, whipped his kids, and we've gotta respond? We're living in a different time, and again, there's a lot of needs that we have. I don't think this is the time to stand before you and ask you for any more than what we're already asking you for. I know the commissioner had mentioned, the number that was thrown out was 500, and I forget what it was. You know, what I'm looking at in this line item for the jail...
548.
...was 548. What I'm looking at increasing is the, is right at $400,000 for the jail, for these areas that have got to be addressed, and I think need to be addressed immediately. The other is dealing with our medical insurance, other insurance, and retirement, and stuff like that. I know the county has put together a pay study and a pay scale, looking at bringing all the county employees up. I believe we've got some issues with that, and it is my position that we need to take the hard look at that and work together as elected officials, and try to fix those before we push that through. And I will tell you, and I'll brag on the other elected officials that are here tonight, that, you know, I seen this happen a few years ago, when we were talking about raising taxes, and all the elected officials got together several times since I've been in office. We met a few weeks ago, and we understand that in order for us to operate the way, and I'm speaking personally, but I think the elected officials also understand that in order for us to serve you the way that we need to, that we're gonna have to continue getting together and working together as a group and as a body of elected officials. We've gotta continue meetings like this, where we hear from the public, we hear what your concerns are, and then we've gotta start working on a long-term plan for the county. We can't do it all in one year, and we can't do it all this year. But I do think that we have got to work together as a body of elected officials and put together a comprehensive five-year plan, and bring that back to the public, so we're all on the same plan as we move together. So, yeah, I know you probably have a lot of questions, and, yes, ma'am?
Would it be cheaper for the county to close the jail and house them in other bigger counties with bigger jails?
No, ma'am.
Why?
Because then you're paying $40 per inmate to house those inmates out.
But it's still be cheaper for 482,000, whatever that figure he was...
I'm only, I'm only housing...
548?
I'm housing 30 to 40 inmates for Sandy Springs, and it's generating us, they're paying us half a million dollars a year.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, if you closed the jail, there wouldn't be any...
Well, you can close the jail. We have to have the jail. It's a constitutional duty as a sheriff, is to maintain and operate the jail.
In order of state authority.
Yes, ma'am.
You said you made upwards of $50,000, $50,000 housing these prisoners?
Per month, yes, ma'am.
Where does that money go?
We, the check, we send a bit out to Sandy Springs, they send us the check, and we send that over to the commissioner's office to Ms. Faye, and it goes back into general funds.
It should not go in the general, why doesn't it go to your fund?
But it goes to general funds, and it's...
It should not support this budget?
Right.
So it goes back to you?
So we're not supporting...
Okay.
We're trying to help bring the revenue in, which in return helps support us.
I just wanted to make sure it's getting back to you.
Yes, ma'am. Ultimately, it does. Because if we don't get that money back, it's gotta come from somewhere. Yes, ma'am.
First off, I think you, I think you run a well-disciplined, cost-effective jail, and I appreciate that. I'd like to say, I think you reported that you spent about $45,000 on your anti-drug joint task force, is that correct?
The Appalachian or Zeller Mountain Drug Task Force, yes, ma'am, $45,000.
Given the nature of this type of operation used by other law enforcement agencies, they reap a lot of benefits for themselves. So in the past 12 months, how much, how much in dollars have you secured in asset forfeiture funds?
For the sheriff's office or through the drug task force?
For the sheriff's office.
Sandy, have you got any rough numbers?
I can have it tomorrow, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
And are those, and are those costs, are those assets used to offset any of your costs?
Yes, ma'am. Any seizures that we make with the drug seizures, it comes back into our office, that we generate the arrests from. Comes back into a special account that we maintain at the sheriff's office, and it is spent on equipment and training, normally.
And so it does come back to you?
Yes, ma'am.
If it's in...
Yes, ma'am. And we maintain that in our checking account within our office. As far as the drug task force, if that drug task force makes an arrest in Pickens County and makes a seizure, then we get a percentage of that. A percentage goes to the DA's office, and the remainder goes back into the drug task force to help us operate that task force. Yes, sir?
Where does your training come from, and how do you allocate it within the half-dozen categories that you list?
We, I've got one guy, Jimmy Corey. I don't know if Jimmy's here with us tonight. Jimmy is lieutenant for the sheriff's office. He is responsible for making sure that all of our guys get our training. We do a lot of in-house training that he puts on. We've probably got a half dozen to a dozen officers that are certified instructors, so they teach. We also bring up other agencies that helps us teach. You know, we're talking about the jail a lot tonight. One of the big areas that we, when we have turnover, we have to certify our jailers within six months. So we work closely with the Georgia Sheriff's Association, and we actually host that training at our jail, and we teach that normally annually. We also have a shooting range up on Jones Mountain Road, a firing range there, that we bring in, other agencies come in, and they work, and they train their agencies in return, they teach us, and they make donations to help us keep the range up and do the improvements on the range. Yes, ma'am.
Under your probation, are you, your probation in drug abuse, is that part of your department?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank goodness. I've gotta know.
You say you're charging $40 per inmate per day.
That's right.
You're netting about 32?
About 32.
$4.50 for meals? So is the drugs and the medication and the doctors...
Yes, Sandy, so anything over and beyond the actual housing, so if I go out an inmate that requires medication, or he needs to go to the doctor, Sandy Springs pays that in addition to the $40. In return, and we've been very fortunate with the inmates we have from Sandy Springs. I know of one inmate that we really had issues with, it was some mental health issues. We picked up the phone, we called the chief and said, "Look, this guy's gotta go." We immediately got him back to Sandy Springs, and they take him on down to Fulton County, where they house all their felons.
You mentioned that you had a nurse for seven days a week?
Yes, ma'am.
And a doctor came in one day a week?
Yes, ma'am.
But that number seems to have gone up, now you're having...
Yeah, we're bringing in the nurse in for 16 hours a day.
Why? I mean, is that, you have to do that?
We're not, what we're saying is, we're not able to, and I hate to say it this way, because I know a lot of people say, "Well, they're inmates, you don't need to worry about them." But the fact is, they're somebody's mother, brother, sister, daughter, and we are responsible for them. So if I have somebody come in at 10 o'clock in the morning, and the one nurse that we have is tied up taking care of sick call, and getting meds ready, and all the other duties that she has, or he has, it may be a day or two before they have their intake. That's not exactly, we have to make sure that when they come into the facility, that they get their medical intake taken care of.
Our veterans are sitting waiting for-
Yes, ma'am.
-for doctors.
I agree, I agree.
But I think that what you have been providing, seven days a week, and a doctor, what a lot of people in this room don't get, that amount of help.
The many days that me and my staff don't get three meals a day either, but we've got to provide that for the inmates.
But this is, this is the increase that you're providing because you feel it's necessary, that you're not-
I'm providing it because it is definitely necessary.
By law?
Yes, ma'am.
Or just because you love by law?
No, I'm telling you, if we don't provide the service when it comes to medical for our inmates, we will be in federal court immediately. And it's not a matter of if it's going to cost, it's a matter of how much it's going to cost. You end up in jail, and you're taking insulin, and you don't get your insulin, and you end up to the hospital, guess what, guys, it's my fault.
There are-
Regardless, I'm sorry, regardless if you've seen the doctor, or you've done anything when you're on the street, we get guys coming into the jail that would never go to the doctor. But as soon as they hit those doors, guess what? I need to see the doctor.
But that's why some of them come to jail, they want to be caught, and they can get free medical-
But I will tell you this while we're talking about it-
Free meals and-
We are very fortunate that we have the relationship we have with our judges and our probation, and the other folks in the judicial system in Pickens County, because when we get those guys in jail that's, may not be able to make a bond, and he seriously, he or she seriously has some medical issues, we can usually get those out pretty quick if it's something that we need to work on, if you follow what I'm saying, so.
Doesn't the law say you only have to feed them twice a day?
I'm not aware of that.
That's all I hear.
Me too, and I'll let you to get that someday. Back corner.
Sunglasses on?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I heard you say that this year you're asking for four hundred thousand, but there was another number, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, so there's a hundred and forty-eight thousand difference there. When is that going to be asked for?
Okay, the four hundred thousand is what we're discussing with the jail inmates and medical and the, you got those other numbers?
Technology.
Technology. The additional is the numbers that Ms. Fay has come up with that's going to cost us in medical insurance, and, you got a breakdown on that?
Yeah.
What else was it, Fay? I mean, FICA and medical and-
I think it was the numbers we discussed.
And did that include the increase in salaries? Okay, now, the one thing that we had originally talked about was increasing in salaries according to the salary survey that was done last year. Again, I think for our office, it's about eighty-six thousand, don't hold me to that number, but it was in the eighty thousand dollar range. And what I'm telling you tonight is, I'm not saying that I don't want our staff to have a raise, I think we need to look at the salary structure and survey that was done, and I think we need to do some more work on it before we just throw out that number and start giving that to those staff, countywide, not just our office. And I think the other elected officials will agree, agree with that.
And did you say that our central command center has been down for a year?
No, central is what operates the jail, then we have the tower. That tower has been down for probably six months or so, yes, sir. But right-
As important as that is, why wasn't that addressed six months?
Honestly, we're making do with what we've got, and, but if we continue letting it go, and then we lose central, then we're in trouble.
Did you say, did you say that you sent out RFQs for your medical services?
Yeah, we have, I think, two or three beds, and I know that we've got two or three.
Because that, that's a good plan, a lot of jails do that.
Right. And like I said, we're going, well, the one that we're seriously considering right now is servicing two hundred and twenty-four other jail facilities, provide a five million dollar liability insurance, and if anything happens or goes wrong, guys, we're out of it, and it goes back to the jail medical folks.
It's going to be cheaper than what you're doing now.
Yes, ma'am. In the back of the room?
My name's Urban Smith, I pastor at church here in Pickington County. I started pastoring in Georgia in nineteen sixty. Since then, I've been associated with pastoring in five different counties. This is the most efficient and professional county that I've ever worked in with the police department. And I'd like to commend you for a wonderful job that you've done. You've done beyond the expectations.
Thank you. And guys, again, I mean, we truly care about what we're doing, and that's why it's so hard to stand up and talk about the money. We know how hard it is. Yes, sir.
I understand what he's saying and what you're asking for, but as taxpayers, it's kind of hard to get excited about increasing our taxes for the benefit of inmate criminals, their well-being and their health. It's kind of hard to-
Well, I understand. I get it, and that's why it is so hard. I mean, if I was buying, no pun to slant, if I was buying a shiny new fire truck that we could, it would be different. I mean, it really would. But I assure you, if we don't keep these guys in jail and we don't continue doing what we're doing, you're not going to continue seeing the quality of life that we have in the county. We're trying to be proactive, we're trying to get out in front of it, and, you know, you compare our county to the other two counties in the circuit, we're making, and Allison, were you, you're here?
I think you had the two.
The cases that we're making in Pickens versus Gilmer and Fannin, I mean, what do you see in there, the number of the cases, criminal cases?
Criminal cases that we have here are about forty-three percent of what we carry circuit-wide, and our case level increase is pretty much commensurate with what you're going to see with population increases. We do have a tremendous amount of our cases that we are having to deal with.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I'd like to add, because I've been in Pickens County a lot less time, but I've noticed that the sheriff's office does tremendous job, and I'm thinking about that.
Thank you.
I have noticed, though, there's been a bunch of godly numbers being about, a lot of numbers, you know, mentioned that just seem pretty hot. One in Pickens that stood out, of course, was five thousand dollars a month for inmates' vacations.
Yes, sir.
Was he robbing the Verizon store to fund those drugs? That's my main point. I think what keeps jumping out, I keep hearing, having been, you know, listening to a lot of meetings and stuff like that, is this insurance, this fight for this insurance, all this stuff.
Why would you?
The increased cost.
Why would they?
That is, that is the employee insurance.
Well, what I'm asking is, is it possible that we need to be looking a little more at the compensation structure for everybody, not necessarily make salaries, but the fact insurance costs are going up, and that's, that's a benefit.
And are going up.
I don't get to reduce my costs of insurance, I got to pay my-
I'm going to pass this one off to the commissioner.
Why do we have to pay their employees' insurance?
So we pay for our own.
We have to pay our own.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting, everybody in here's got to pay their own insurance.
Pay yours.
So I'm wondering why, why the godly numbers, why, like, it's like, that seems to be, and
I forgive me if I'm just reading too much into it, but it seems to be the overriding theme about this, that I keep hearing about this insurance cost for all the administrators, all the county.
The, as of this year, give me the copy on that one right there, that's it. The employees of Pickens County had got a, correct me if I'm wrong, a two-and-a-half percent raise last year, they're out, more or less. That two-and-a-half percent raise plus the two-and-a-half percent that the county put in, they had to put some skin in the game on the retirement because of the retirement plan first, that we reworked here, the commissioner's reworked here last year, and the first part this year. As for the health insurance, is what, what the issue is, and that, that keeps going up. We have raised the deductible, for instance, for going to the emergency room, that has went up from, I think originally, back a few years ago, you could go to emergency room for fifty bucks, or a hundred bucks. That has now upped to about, what, two fifty to five hundred now, depending on what the issue is. We've tried to done that, because we'd rather the employees go to a doctor than just go to emergency room, because all that does is cause everybody's insurance to go up at the end of the year, hence what we have to keep the cost excess to that.
And the employees do cost share that.
And the employees do ca, yeah, that's correct, and the employees do cost share that. The overall deductible for the major medical law has went up also, we're paying more, the employees are paying more for their, for their drugs, and with the drug plan that we've got. So we have tried in the last two or three years to have some, for the employees to have some skin in the game, because we, we see it coming, we see with the healthcare that we're having to deal with, everybody's having to issue that one. And of course, what's hurt Pickens County and the sheriff's department and all is our part-time staff. We were, we were blessed to the fact that we had individuals that would work part-time, didn't have to furnish them insurance, didn't want insurance. We've now got some full-time staff that doesn't require health insurance anymore, so they, they do waivers to keep them having to, to pay that out, and that's what we've been looking at. But with, with what we're seeing up there at the feds, it's putting a little squeeze on us to the fact that we can't work part-time employee more than twenty-eight and a half hours a week, or we've got to furnish them health insurance. It's not, and it's mandatory. So those are issues that we're trying to work through to put some more skin in the game for the employees to come through.
Do you, do you send out RFQs for various insurance?
We, we-
Agencies or carriers to get the best bang for the buck? And does it include the entire, like, general judiciary, public safety? Is all of that under one umbrella?
It does everything that we do that, to get a county, Pickens County paycheck, everybody under the umbrella can take that insurance out. Once a year, we look at that policy, we normally can get the three companies to bid, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, United Healthcare and Coventry. Once in a while, every two years, we, we have to switch because of the pricing and the percentages that they're on that face having to deal with to make the budget meet, we have to come down. In order to make that, say, hopefully, we keep it at ten percent, but in order to keep it at ten percent, sometimes the employee has to put, his deductible will go up just a little bit. So we're trying to, trying to balance two things together, and yes, we do, we put it out, we got three companies that'll bid on that. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, Sheriff Craig, I just wanted to praise you for your forward thinking on trying to drive revenue in our county and for the job that you and the men are doing. And then, as far as the insurance goes, what is the percentage that the county pays for an individual, and then what is the percentage the county pays for dependent coverage?
We've got a breakdown right here, be glad to give everybody a copy of that when you leave. It'll take me quite a while to explain it, and I'm not, these two individuals have to be insurance people, I'm not an insurance person. But the breakdown in spouse, we had to run that this afternoon, just in case somebody wanted a copy of this. So we've got it right here, and we'd be glad to make some more copies before y'all leave on that.
And then just one other comment about that. My personal deductible is seven thousand five hundred dollars, and I have no coverage until then. So what you're talking about coverage for the employees for the county sounds like a Cadillac to me.
Yeah. To me. Wow, they, wow, they still owe us pay.
They do pay, they're, they're increasing, they're increasing their, how much money they put, skin in the game to pay for that.
All of them. I don't pay all mine, I pay, they pay all theirs.
Well, I'd like to add something in regard to that. There are folks here, you know, you need to remember, that some of the people, like the people that are working in the jail, they make thirteen dollars and eight cents an hour. They're dealing every day with inmates. I mean, I firsthand, I work there, and I see it every day. Now, I'm lucky, I'm not dependent on the wage there to provide for my family. I also have my spouse's health insurance, so I'm one of those employees of Pickens County that does not take a single taxpayer's dollar toward my health insurance. I choose to go with my spouse's. So, but just keep in mind that, I understand that you guys have, everybody has different types of insurance, but you also need to remember that there are people here that are working two and three jobs just to provide for their families, and, and they're, and they're on the struggle bus, so I'd like to just mention.
Yes, ma'am.
Rob, I think we all indeed into the sheriff's department, and we truly probably understand what he's trying to do. I don't think we could function as a county without them. But you, we seem to have two separate issues here, too, because we've got the sheriff's department, then we have the seniors over here, that we feel like are getting dumped on.
Yeah, amen.
You know, so we feel like y'all aren't working toward getting us in breaks.
Only senior deduction we've got so far in Pickens County, as you well know, is
twenty-five thousand dollars or less.
Every county around us has that.
And I, that's still, yeah, and I agree with that point. I have, personally, we like to sit down, I've been trying, I've got a file behind my desk with different plans from different counties, but I'm the only one that's been working on the thing, seems like, and trying to get something going.
I volunteer to help.
But there is, but there is, there is a process we have, we have to work through to make it happen, and we've got to fix it to the fact that our legislators can get it on the ballot, whether it can be voted either for or against. So those are some items we've got to work towards. Yes, ma'am?
I think where y'all can do that.
Pardon?
I think where y'all can put that on the ballot.
Actually, Gilmer County had a citizen from the Tea Party, and David Ralston, without the commissioners or the school, school board getting involved in it. So it can be happened, it can be happened always if you can get your, your state representatives to, to back you up on that one. Yes, ma'am.
I know seniors, you know, after sixty-five, in Pickens County still has to pay for the school board taxes. Yeah. And if you go to Cherokee County, you don't. Yeah. If you go to Cobb County, you don't. If you go to El J, you don't. So, what's, because my husband and I have a limited income. He just had to have surgery. We came out here sixteen years ago, wonderful place, we were working, but things happened. You don't have money, you have to borrow the money to pay your taxes, it's bad. And we've had to several times now.
And the, and the-
And I was just wondering how, how does Cobb, which is a big county, gets by with that, and we can't?
Cobb's got a, Cobb's got a commercial, industrial, and retail sale scenario that backs up what the senior citizens get for a tax breakdown there. We've got a county that's got twenty-nine thousand, six hundred people, and when you deal with Cherokee County, that's got a pretty good senior tax exemption. They got two hundred and forty-seven thousand people.
El J, it's not-
El J's got, El J's still got some issues, and we're all aware of that. But we're talking about the miller rate increase, and the senior citizens needs to, we need to have a meeting on that at a separate time and come up with a plan of what we want to do to bring this thing forward. So we need to work on that one. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason that the funds from Sandy Springs goes to the general, to the general funds? Because to me, it needs to go back to the sheriff's department. They need to, they are doing the work, they need to get the income, and, and every reason they have to go to, to the general fund.
Those monies go, go on, sorry.
Maybe the entire, the entire sheriff's budget is funded by the general fund.
They get credit, they get credit. The loss is over.
Hold, 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 hold. Do what, Ms. Butler? Go ahead, me? I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
To me, it glosses over because he's coming and asking for four hundred thousand dollars plus, and if he had that fifty thousand a month each, then he wouldn't be having to ask for additional money.
He has that revenue budget in, he has a budget line with that revenue line.
So it goes directly to him.
And that revenue supports his general fund budget. The general fund pays his salaries, all the expenditures, everything for the shift.
I understand that, but he's budgeting two heads.
Yes?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Now, is the general fund some kind of magic fund that other people can't get you the money in? Because, you know, in my experience, being a seventy-year-old, is that when stuff goes there, the general fund, everybody on the planet is trying to spend it, and I'm not exactly sure that that goes back, back to the sheriff's department or shouldn't, you know, anybody else could be spending it, too.
I can give you a prime example of that, and I'm a very, when you have somebody in finance, and the one thing I'll say in this county is that all of your elected officials have great confidence in our finance department, because when we ask a question, we're usually met head-on with an answer, and we have access to that. I'm a court, I draw fines and fees, when people break the law or they're involved in the system, they pay that in. Every year, I'm asked for a revenue budget to say, "Okay, how much are you going to potentially bring in?" Well, that's a guess, because we don't control crime, we don't control the number of civil[1753.86] Well, that's a guess because we don't control crime or the number of civil cases, but we put a number down. And every month, I get, in fact, got one today from Ms. Fay, saying, this is what you've paid in this, so far this year against what your expenditures are that we budgeted you for. So, even though the general fund sounds like some magic number that's just floating around, we all get to see each other's, but we also get to see what's dedicated to us versus what we're spending. And, you know, again, I'll give you the example of the sheriff, and somebody asked this about it this morning. Why doesn't this money, why doesn't that money go directly to the sheriff? Well, and that encourages the sheriff, although we have a very ethical one, to try to keep people in jail, because at that point, he's drawing revenue, if you think about it. So, again, keeping us as your elected officials once removed and leaving that in the breast of the finance department where it is an open record and a very, a very, very transparent process, it works out better for us. I mean, I couldn't imagine if you were to give out everybody's budget at the beginning of the year and say, okay, manage this till the end of the year. We do that incrementally, and we do it with, all of us, meeting with Fay, every department head, every judge, every clerk. We sit down with Fay routinely because we know that there are certain times of the year when tax revenue is coming in and when it's not coming in, and we try to budget expenditures at the same rate so that we're not bombarding them all at one time. It'd be real easy to do that, but fortunately, again, we have confidence that we have in them and the cooperation of the elected officials and the board of commissioners. It makes that process, I would say, very open and transparent. Fay provides it to us regularly, and it's available to you monthly as a set.
Well, if the finance is so wonderful, why are we looking at a 13.84% increase in taxes? I mean, that's, that's a, did you earn an extra 13.84% last year on anything?
I wish I would have, but I did. And the issue there...
I don't think many people in here did.
I don't think anybody.
Where's that gonna come from? I'm asking the wrong guy.
Well, you sort of kind of do not, because we're all in this together. Your elected officials, other than the board of commissioners, control 52.8% of the budget. And so, we all share the responsibility. That's why you'll see that every elected official in this county is standing in this room tonight. We're not making the board of commissioners try to take this on their own, because we recognize and we hope that you have the trust in us and hold us accountable for this in the way that it's not that we want, I said this earlier this morning, it's not that we want to spend 13.8% over our budget. However, being a government, there are certain things that are constitutionally and by law mandated that we do. And it's much like, I spent the first 15 years of my career in the sheriff's office, had a great, had a great opportunity to open that jail. What the sheriff hasn't said is that, and he said he's 10 years old. He's wrong. That jail is actually about 34 years old, because that jail is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and those doors are clicking just as much at 1:00 in the morning as they are at 1:00 in the afternoon. And from a capital outlay standpoint, quite frankly, two squalls ago, we should have had it back on the budget, or back on the squalls to address the issues with the jail, because we all know that if you build it, they will come. The day that we left the old jail that had a capacity of 48 inmates, we had 52. We moved them into the jail, and within six months, we had 75. And within a year, we had, you know, again, it just keeps growing. I think the revenue stream is a great idea. The problem that you're going to have at some point is, in this community, crime, again, it doesn't pay. It may have good benefits, as you've said, but again, I can tell you, I operated the jail under the corridor, and I do not wish that on anyone, having a federal court monitor that looks at everything that you do. We all kind of get fed up with the federal government, and, you know, you're talking about health insurance, talk about Obamacare, you know, but again, it's a process that we're forced to do, and as your elected officials, the best we can say to you is, we want to do it as efficiently as possible, and the unfortunate part is, that costs money. We operate by public safety services, judicial services, and public works 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, on half of what the school system operates technically on 190 days a year. And that's a whole nother issue, but again, I just shared, you have to realize what's being provided, and that while it may not specifically impact you as an individual, it impacts the collective of the community. And a safe community is a thriving community. And I think that speaks volumes to the number of people that have moved here because they feel comfortable in the services and what's being provided in this county.
I guess the question is always, $50,000 a month extra that you're getting when you're in prison, times 12, that's $600,000 a year. Are you getting an extra $600,000 a year?
What topic is your regular budget?
Above and beyond.
That is the question, and that seems to be the misunderstanding. You're saying that you're getting...
It goes back to the revenue. When I submit my budget, we go, before we started Sandy Springs, and I don't remember exactly where our budget was, we increased last year, and we sat down and said, okay, this is what we're going to need to operate. Now, we're going to bring in an additional $300,000. Now, we're going to need, in our budget, an additional $150,000, because we wanted to make sure that we were giving something back, and we weren't just trying to take all the money we were making. So, we try to keep it...
Why don't you, because you want more money for your jail.
But this year, we've got to have more money, and by having the Sandy Springs helps offset some of that.
So, you should get your $600,000. We do extra.
Yes, sir.
Is it listed as a line item, as income to you?
Yes, ma'am. We show that as coming in and then going back out.
And you're, so you're getting, above your budget, you're getting $600,000.
Well, that is part of my budget, but we show that through the revenue.
So, your increase is like $100,000 or, I mean... Well, $600,000. I mean, like 600, your increase is like a million dollars.
Let me get this video on. Go ahead.
My, my thing is, I understand you've got to feed people, you've got to give them medication, you've got to provide medical care, stuff like that, and I understand that that's in your budget, but this fixing the pod, fixing the community system, that's a one-time thing. So, why, you know, we both work, you know, we get a little extra money, we put hardwood floors down. Why can you not, like, slowly, you know, like, why all of a sudden this big, huge budget that's over everybody else for one...
Well, only one time thing is the $150,000 in capital outlay. And we have been, with the camera system, been trying to update that as we've gone through this year. But that 150, hopefully, will not be needed again the following year. But again, the facility's 10 years old. Who knows? I mean, there's...
My house is 10 years old.
Let me get the young lady around here.
This question is for you. One thing that has not been brought up in all this tax increase, you know, most of us in here can't afford that, is we live off social security, and we haven't got a raise in years. But why don't you do what other counties do? When they need money, they do a county-wide reassessment of properties. And then, this one, Pickens hasn't had a county-wide reassessment of the property since 2000.
That's left up to the Tax Assessor Board, and we have the chairman sitting right here. Roy, you want to explain that? Phil, when's the last time you did a complete property assessment?
We've done a lot of different updates through the years. The lady called earlier today. Her question was, if it was the last county-wide where we did all classes across the board, and that was 2000.
Okay.
She can come by the office and I'll update her on all the different things we've done and what the department of revenue has said about it or not yet.
Well, what's your procedure now, though? Do you do it county-wide at one time, or you try to do it every three years, go through and take a burden?
What we try to do is do partials, because what we found out doing in county-wide across the board, it really overloads everything. The cost is exorbitant at that time. So, what we try to do is be more efficient with it by targeting areas and classes of properties as needed.
Other counties do it. Why can't we? Well, they need more money. That's what they do.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any businesses that are currently getting some kind of tax incentive for being located here that we're not equipped with?
Not, no. Not this time. And normally, if that happens, it has to go through the Industrial Authority, either of Pickens County or the City of Jasper, to get tax incentives. Now, there is an area down around Tate, Georgia, around the Jordan Marble Company, that gets a, that's an enterprise or opportunity fund type scenario. They do get a tax break depending on how many employees they have, but they don't get a county tax break, they get a state tax break. But it has to be classified as an opportunity slash enterprise zone to make that happen. Yes, sir?
Kind of in that same vein, because I know we're looking at increasing the tax rate. Are we actively looking to increase the tax base? Are we actually actively out there recruiting, trying to get businesses into to increase the tax base? It sells so we don't overburn our projects.
What we have done, of course, we've got a gentleman now on board, Jerry McCall, that's economic development in Pickens County. Commentary, probably, just about every building, every big commercial building, except about three or four, or even leased, sold, or rented here in Pickens County. The old shoe plant, for instance, we had a gentleman out of Cherokee County bought that building, and now he's got it divided up. He's got two or three occupants already in that building, that big shoe plant complex. HD Lee Plant, that was Restaurant Interiors, I forgot what they call it now. That building is now, since it's, that building's actually owned by the Industrial Authority. They have leased that building to Restaurant Interiors, and they sold, and they call it something else now. But they've got, I forgot how many employees they've got there on that one. Down on 108, Mountain View, across from the chicken houses, every building there has got either leased or sold. Their building, I heard, one or two more down there, and I think they've already got those buildings in the works. And then, we've got this big project that some of y'all heard of going up around the hospital that looks like, that's very promising to that point. That's what we need coming in. That's what we need to develop. And the fact of the matter is, everybody here's got to remember, there's 15 miles of 515 in Pickens County, 15 miles. 13 miles of that's in the city of Jasper.
But 515 is about the only road in Pickens County.
That is correct.
Many roads like Pickens, where you're...
That is correct. But in order to bring industrial, in order to bring industrial and commercial in, you've got to have sewer. Water's not an issue now. We have pretty good water, pretty good coverage for a few more years, but sewer is the issue. And right now, the city of Jasper's got the only sewer that we've got going on. Hold on. Yes, sir?
Okay, I mean, I have a question. I mean, the county still gives, even though it didn't see the limits of justice, the county, if anything, it built on there, which I don't know of anything that the city has turned down, the county just taxes the place off, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so it doesn't really matter whether it's in the city or out there.
No, no. Well, I was trying, the point I was trying to make, the reason why I'm trying to focus to the 515 area and the 53 quarter closer to downtown is the sewer, sewer tie-ins, and that's really the big thing. That's why we're trying to push for all the economic development. Hopefully, Walmart is now going, Murphy Old now is building in front of Walmart. We've got Dunkin' Donuts now, I believe that's what it is, building beside the old Kentucky Fried Chicken. That's coming in. There is, there is a couple of entities that are looking at properties now, and so those are slowly, slowly coming to fruition. I had somebody else had a question. Oh, yes, sir?
You know, the problem is, we've got a certain amount of cost represented by the budgets and what the needs are. And then, we've got all of the people that we're trying to spread those costs on, and their portion is based on their property. So, my thought is, my question to you, Mr. Jones, is perhaps there's another way of addressing this in terms of sheriff responsibilities, Sloan's responsibilities with EMS. Perhaps there's an opportunity that Pickens County and the city of Jasper might merge, and in that merger, synergies get created, which allows better services at lower cost for all the citizens concerned. And I think it's something that maybe the time has come to take a look at whether or not it would make sense for the city of Jasper to...
Well, we're seeing it down in Cherokee County to the fact that, you know, Cherokee County has taken over the fire department for Canton, but they work together to make that happen. Those are possibilities. You get two entities that wants to work together to make that happen, that sure could, because you consolidate the water and sewer system with what Pickens County's got. Everybody work together on that. You can do your fire protection. EMS, 911 is always, is already handled by the county government. That's a possibility.
How do we start that?
I would say, maybe if you guys wanted, individuals want to get together and talk to the city council and see if they're amenable to some sort of thing.
We guys, I think I guys. You guys are the elected officials.
Well, it has to be, I would have no problem. They'll hear this. I mean, it's being videoed, so they will hear this. I'd be glad. I mean, I'm sure us three here sitting here would be glad to talk about the situation. There is about four or five counties in the state that have taken over the cities. Columbus, Muskogee, Athens, Clark, there's three more, and I can't pull them off the top of my head right now, that have consolidated city county government. Anything could be possible. Yes?
That was my opinion. There doesn't need to be two governments. There only needs to be one government. This is a small county, and we don't need a mayor and commissioners. We just need one. And I realize that probably, I don't know what you have to go through to do that, but that really needs to happen. The South is a county, it's small.
Normally, yeah. Normally, what happens, if I may say, phones, normally, if I may, when these other counties that I mentioned wound up taking over the city, the city got in financial stress. And what happens is, when the city gets in financial stress, they approach the county. Only way a county or the DCA, the Department of Community Fair handles all of those issues. And normally, the citizens of the city have to get it on a ballot to dissolve the city charter. Then the county comes in, takes it over, and then, then they, hopefully, they mingle to the fact that as commission board here, might have to expand to a five-person board or something. But then, what would happen would then, they, that group, they would pick a city manager to run the city, and then they would consolidate, say, fire, consolidate water and sewer, consolidate road departments. There'd be a whole lot of stuff that you consolidate together. But, you know, it's, it's, it'd take a big group to make this happen and sell the package.
I don't think it should be just left up to the citizens of the, of the city. It seems to me this is a county thing, and I don't know why they would have...
That would be something we would have to talk to our state representatives to see, because it'd have to go through DCA to make that happen. State...
Why can't they, why don't we do it just on sales tax, raise the sales tax? Not way everybody has to pay their firepower, you know, whether it's distance down the road, or a lady that's got 100 acres or whatever, everybody's got to pay their fire share. I would be a lot happier with that.
Do you, you're doing a whole, can't just do way with property tax, and just have a county-wide sale tax?
Any comments for this? Whatever they had to tell you.
No, it's crazy sales.
Good question.
Good work, Ms. Fay. Yeah, the question is, what percentage?
The state only the last 7%.
What percentage of revenue coming to our county?
From out of county, South County?
We can get Dunkin' Donuts, though. It works in Tennessee, Rob. Pardon? It works in these parts of Tennessee. Well, Tennessee always has, you know, they already have, what, state income tax at Tennessee also?
Lincolnhamster has a tax.
Oh, well, the life tax increase, that money was used to pay off the people with young life. Where did that money go? We didn't get a break, so where did that 400 or 1,000 come in? I mean, the lifetime of your tax, is that what part of the recent?
We're talking about, we're talking about the miller rate here. That is history. I mean, you'd be glad to talk out in the hall. I'd have to go back and look at the records on that one. That settlement was 450-something thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, on that settlement for young life, and it was negotiated through attorneys from both sides.
Now, was that called, that was the tax increase, what I had?
No. Well, I'm not going to say, no. I can't remember. I'd have to go back.
It was rolled back, if I'm not mistaken.
Do what?
Back after we paid that.
Yeah.
So, it did.
Yeah. I think it was, I think you're right, Steve. Yeah, I think, I think you were, I think you're right, Steve, I think it was rolled back. Yes, sir?
A lot of homeowners think that, uh, the burden to taper government falls unfairly on them. How does business tax revenue compare to homeowner revenue?
That can be better answered by your, uh, county chief appraiser back there on that one, on the way assessments are done on commercial property.
The, to answer your question, the millage rate that they're talking about now is a fair and uniform number across the board, no matter what the type of property, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, the rate is for every single person that gets a tax bill for that one, thanks, uh.
Hold on, was it, Ms. Denny wants to, wants to speak a second.
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to say, while we're thinking outside the box, that I really appreciate, uh, Sheriff Craig bringing in an income stream and in that vein, and this might be very unpopular, but I would like to see us put it on the ballot to have liquor sales in the county. We have it.
Yes.
We have it in the city, we have it in the surrounding counties, anybody can get it wherever they want it, we're not here to make moral judgments, we're making, trying to make really good business decisions and I firmly believe that would bring in a great tax revenue and that's what we need to be looking at.
Now, whoa, back there, back, yes, sir?
I have a question about the sales tax, is that constantly used, like if we have any basic sales tax, can that be used?
The state won't let us do the one percent percent. And that grant, yeah, state, this, yeah.
Uh, Steve? I got the numbers, I wanna start from, go on, bro, 'cause that's where I, I wanna know where we're at. This, this, this increase is not, wasn't voted on, it's not set in stone. Judicial's already said that they need sixty thousand dollars, am I correct?
What we said this morning was, if, if my budget's sixty and Judge Weaver's goes down and juvenile's is ninety-five, that number, what, what you all may be looking at, it's kinda like the lumpen apples and oranges, my court, Bay to Lindsey's court, uh, clerk of court, the superior court, the juvenile court, the clerks of court and, and the DA's office and the public, are all in that judicial line item. It's not, it's not just us.
Right, correct, that's what I'm saying.
And that, and that number this morning, Steve, was two fifty-three, go ahead.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you're saying, you're saying you do need two fifty-three, am I correct in judicial?
I'm saying that that's what we, that overall, basically, I submitted, I think my forty-nine, forty-eight, forty-nine thousand, uh, in mind with statutory things that come to us, it's either unfunded mandates that we have to fulfill our obligations in the court system and I think that's pretty much what we see across the board, I think that the DA didn't ask for anything.
Those decisions is dumb, right?
Well, actually, after our meeting this morning, and I had met with Fay, one of the things that she had provided to me, we did not request increases across the board, however, as a result of our fringe, we did have some built in there that was unknown to me for increase in health insurance costs and pay raises that were applied by the state because part of the employees in the district attorney's office, our state paid county reimburse employees, so there was a slight increase that was built in there that was not requested in our budget, we, we kept all of our numbers the same.
So, we're two fifty-three, probably not an accurate figure?
Well, I, I, Steve, I think it may be, but again, you understand, all of your budgets, everybody, everything for us is controlled by the state, you may get a county paycheck, but all of the things that come to us, come to us from the state and if they say a three percent pay increase, it's a three percent pay increase, just put in like we're on state law enforcement, they got a twenty percent pay.
Well, yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Hold on, Steve.
This is all figured, yeah.
Hold on, sir.
I think, first, Steve said, and I also, clarifications, the numbers favor, like the two fifty, two hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-eight, can you explain for those counties? Cause I, I'm sort of confusing myself.
That's what, that's what I'm.
Judicial doesn't seem to know for there's a word, the sheriff's a four hundred or alimony.
Hang on, I've got somewhere, I've got somewhere in my pocket, I've got that.
And specifically, do they include the pay studies that add by, like, uh?
I believe they include.
So, the pay study is included on the numbers favor?
Correct. I have one a little bit, yes?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
You caught me off guard, sorry about that. Another thing I had to read about and bring it up is, there is over one point five million dollars in delinquent taxes, how, about, all, we can solve that.
That is being handled, uh, this gentleman had been put on staff here about three years ago, his main function is collecting back taxes. Now, now, pardon?
How do you do it?
Well, Darren, Darren Saddlefield probably explained it better than I, but Darren, you wanna run it through real quick, cause he has collected quite a bit for the tax office.
There's a gentleman over here.
The marshal.
The marshal, okay.
So, you just don't knock on the door and say, you're out of here unless you pay attention?
Just, just personal.
Yeah, uh, basically, they've got me doing the, what they call the rebuild mobile.
Can you stand up, cause I can't hear you.
Yeah, what they got me doing, what they call rebuild mobile homes, they were, gosh, I think when I took over, was seven, eight years ago, the, when we got to looking at it, there was taxes that hadn't been collected for seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, sixteen years. We've got just about all of that down now, where almost everybody is within a year or two of being kind of delinquent. Now, there are probably eight to ten cases to where we've got several years, like four, five, six, seven years on there, the reason why that is, is they file for bankruptcy, we can't touch it, and when they file for bankruptcy, we just have to let the court take, run its course, uh, and that's just the way it is, you know, that's money that most, sometimes, most of them probably will be written off because we can't collect it.
It's like you could fry off taxes.
Well, when you file bankruptcy, I don't know any other way of go get it. And some of the, and, and some of the mobile homes that we've come across, he's tried to keep me impressed and Daryl, Daryl back there trying to keep us impressed, but some of these mobile homes that haven't paid taxes, when you go out there and find them, they're burnt down, they're dilapidated, the owner is nowhere to be found, only thing he can do then, he approaches the property owner that the unit is sitting at and we try to take it from back course to try to get some money back. That's still questionable depending on, on how you can do that. Darren, you have anything?
Most of that's trailer, most of that's trailer money, one and a half million dollars, trailer money?
That was real property.
That was real property. A lot, most of it, the majority of that is the real property. The mobile homes, I'm, don't hold me to this, but I believe when I took over the mobile homes about seven or eight years ago, it was like one and a half million dollars, uh, that was delinquent and we're down now to where it's probably less than two, three hundred thousand.
So, it's, so it's homes and land?
Property.
Yeah, and what I do is.
Real property, heavy equipment, timber, a word, uh, ninety-eight percent collections across the board from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen, like that. And that's considering their property that's under bankruptcy. We don't wipe out bankruptcies, we says it comes out of bankruptcy, we're all over, we're then able to go after them and try to collect, cause it doesn't exclude property taxes or alimony, child support, whatever.
But the law gives you one year and one day to fore, for foreclosure and I have seen that some of those people, it's two years, they're still living in their house and you have a foreclosure.
We just had a tax sale too, which was any properties from two thousand fourteen, twenty fourteen, and, I mean, that's what we're going after, pretty much act before that was cleaned up, there's still some stragglers like twelve, thirteen, but that's pretty much personal property, which is really hard to go after.
Yeah, a lot of stuff like that.
Yes, ma'am.
But you are getting, you are going after it.
Yes, ma'am.
You're foreclosing.
Yes, ma'am.
But correct me if I'm wrong, in, in, as far as tax collections throughout the state of a hundred fifty-nine counties, we rank number two, if I'm not mistaken, in.
Right, ninety-eight percent collections.
That's, that's a hundred fifty-nine counties.
So, we've mentioned, uh, sales tax increase and everything else, and we look at impact fees, in charge of people that are building new things, that are putting more of a demand on the sheriff department, on EMS, fire, have to look at it.
We looked at impact fees, I did back in two thousand nine, when you start looking at how an impact fee has to work, anybody that's collected on impact fee has got to go back to the area or to some sort of, uh, entity, and within that area such as a park, such as a library, such as water lines, it's gotta be specified, you just can't do an impact fee and then just go into the county budget, it's gotta be, gotta be documented on where that money's spent, and rightly so, it's gotta be, gotta be issued to that fact. But what happens, depending on which impact fee you do and how much you do the impact fee, it can, on a small county, cause it to stifle growth to a certain extent because of its movement in the county where there's no impact fee, so it's a balancing act and depending on what you've gotta do. But as for revenue stream, impact fees are not a revenue stream, it's, it's to keep the hundred percent of the property where you're trying to develop, it's close to, uh, zero, uh, monies going into it from county taxpayers as the property comes up. I know it's kind of, kind of, kind of odd way to say, but if you're doing a subdivision, a county or city can do an impact fee, but that money has gotta be kept within that entity there, whether you spend that money on, on roads, water lines or, or those type issues. What we do in Pickens County, if you're a developer and you come into Pickens County and want to develop a subdivision, we, as a community, try to make the developer pay for all the infrastructure and pave the road before that thing is signed off on for the pack that started, that way it doesn't, doesn't hurt the county taxpayers on that one. Yet, we have an impact fee, especially for water meters. Yes, Steve?
Okay. The sheriff's department, we know where we're at, everything else is controlled by the county, you guys. Um, general government, fire, public works, recreation, housing development, that's up to you guys. Whereas, these are increases up, above and beyond what we've already budgeted for from two thousand sixteen, so we're going forty-four thousand dollars over housing development, why are we going over forty-four thousand, why do we need this, why do we need forty-four? You follow where I'm coming from, don't you?
Yeah, but I reviewed, when I, I certainly reviewed that budget here last week and when you look at what they're asking for, they can even replace a vehicle and, um, and there was something else they were, they were trying to, I remember a lot of it, a vehicle was one of them, we were, we were taking a look at that, that's gotta be put out for bids, there's some other things, we've got a quick, and then.
Those are kind of minuscule, public works, what are we doing in public works, do we need two hundred forty-three thousand more than what we're already?
But what we have in public works, we got a long arm, nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine tractor that's got a long arm on it, that we have tried to keep together and twist apart, that was one of the issues on that, and I think he also had, uh.
Or that was capful.
He got, he got a capful outlay that he had.
Yeah, yard length way for what?
For the, for a, um.
Mill.
Lower?
Yeah.
It was, it was a long arm, replace that nineteen ninety-nine model long arm and put a cap track, we're gonna run them all winter and then cut these, cut these roads back and there was a, uh, speed or something else, I can't.
Hundred and twenty K for general government, but we got some, an increase there, are we considering that to be our insurance?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's some departments put together.
Basically, what you're saying is, there's no tweaking here, we know the sheriff's department has tweaked his numbers a little bit and got off of the top forty-eight, got down to four hundred-ish, hopefully, but you're telling me that the other departments, there's no tweaking, you fire the EMS, two hundred, a hundred fifty-nine thousand, where are we at there, what's that?
There, there will be some.
Yeah, they're just, yeah, there will be some tweaking, all this to see exactly what we had, had to meet with all of them.
I think, can we cut that one mill to a half a mill?
Yes.
Is there, is there a way to do that at this juncture? I don't, I don't wanna eat the whole apple in one city.
Yes.
Can we slice it up? Instead of hitting everybody with a one mill increase right off the bat?
Well, we have, we have lived the whole process, we are, but we're, but we're looking to see, but hopefully, you know, if, if it isn't one mill, well, we got.
One meeting left.
Right.
And that meeting's gonna vote this in or vote it out.
That's correct.
So, how are we gonna get that information as to what you've done when we come to that meeting? I mean, you pretty much have already made your mind up by the time we go to that third meeting.
Fay, Fay will be, Fay will be looking at, at the numbers on that part and hopefully we can meet with somebody, get a number.
We have questions over here.
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stand up here. I, I understand the, the sheriff, I think the sheriff needs, excuse me, his money, what he's asking for, because he does a great job and I think no one in here thinks he doesn't. He's asking for a five point, one, three percent increase, which I think he should get, because I think that's fair. But when I look at this, where you've got a hundred and seventeen percent increase for the probation and drug abuse, thirty-four percent increase for public defender, sixty-seven percent cost of running the election office, I need to know, or I'd like to know, what is driving those unusual increases? And I'm sure a lot of other people would like to know that.
Anybody from judicial, I'm sorry.
I'm puzzled by that number of the elections office, cause their budget is actually down quite a bit.
Well, on this, on this, that was published. For the election, it shows, you're, they're asking from two hundred thousand to three thirty-seven, which is a sixty-seven point eighty-six percent increase.
I think you have last, don't you have?
This is from.
That last year.
Because this year, their budget was more, it was over three hundred thousand because they had, they budgeted for six elections.
This is the paperwork that was on your website.
With, with the elections coming on, that's why the number, it'll go down this coming year.
But, but still, I, and, and you know, and another thing that I'd like to say, is if you anticipate that you're only gonna get a five point eight-two percent increase in overall revenue in this coming year, then I believe that the increase in expenditures should not exceed that. If you, if, you know, if you gotta take from somebody's budget over here and take some money out of it, put it, give it to the sheriff or give it to, to probation or juris, wherever judicial, but you can't, you can't hit us, you can't hit us all with, like he said, with one, one, a whole apple. Let me say, let me say one more thing, if I could, please, it would go down a lot easier for a lot of seniors in here who, I, I see a lot of gray hair, if, if we had a consideration of a senior discount in this county.
Yes.
Because I would, you know, I mean, I have no problem with increasing to give, give the sheriff what he needs or to give judicial what they need, but what about us? And, and if it, and, and you know, you said, well, it's on your desk, well, when are you gonna get it off your desk, onto your desk?
Yes.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's my question.
Rob, I know, I know you're getting confused.
That is all right, that's all right.
You know, we live in, I live up in Ventry, we, you don't take care of our roads, you don't take care of our police, you don't care, take care of our fire, anything else, but we keep getting these raises in taxes that we are trying, we have to take care of. You're doing the same thing with the Big Cadoo people?
Yeah.
I'm not too sure about other group, other communities that, that the county or the city does not take care of. We do it all ourselves, but we keep getting killed and we have people moving out of Ventry because they can't afford taxes anymore. They can't afford the high taxes where they can go to Cherokee County or up to LJ or over to Dawson and pay a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars less. My county, my school tax is two thousand dollars.
That's the rate.
Well, but depends on how big your house is. And, and we're not getting any breaks at all, we're, we're, and yet, you're not taking care of us. We vote.
As another elected official, I'm excited, I say, we hear you. We are. I was respectful, not her talk, let me finish. It is, if you're concerned about your school taxes, you are talking to a concrete wall because we don't have control over that.
But the school doesn't ask for.
The school asks.
They get, they get seventy-three percent of what you're, of what you're bottom line with.
They don't ask for them to.
They have their own.
They don't know, they don't.
They don't have anything to do with tax exemption, mine, the commissioners, governing.
They could if they would.
They, they want to.
Well, I'm sorry, they could if they would.
They don't, they're not the governing authority, you three people are.
Actually, the tax, the voters of Pickens County are the governing authority.
After, but it's up to y'all.
And we are, we are representative of the market, that's correct.
Okay, y'all gotta create the plans first.
That's true.
Up to y'all.
I'm a one-man plan creator, I got four of them behind my desk.
It's kind of a two-way sword.
Well, we got, we got, Pickens County's got twenty-five thousand dollars less tax, taxes than what we've got now. The, what we're seeing is a fact that thirty, maybe raise it to thirty or thirty-five thousand with the sunset clause in it to see if that's gonna work.
But you do not count social security impeachings in that.
See, you're, you're, you're already, you know, twisted.
You're already better off than most of the people in the county.
Yeah.
Senior taxes actually needs to be another, so we're talking about a middle grade increase and I understand, and believe me, I'm there.
So, you want a woman that makes thirteen dollars an hour paying school tax?
I'm sorry. I think at this point, I'm what I was going to ask.
I can't hear you.
At this point, what I was gonna say is partially redundant, but the fact is, you've got a room full of people that are here because we're unhappy. When things happen as individuals, we have to have a plan and it doesn't seem to me that there's been much planning ahead because right now, we're getting hit with an unacceptable tax increase. Boom, like this, it didn't happen gradually, it's happening all at once. Something's wrong with the plan here, something needs to be cut back, um, I don't know what it is and you are our elected officials, but it's unacceptable and it's not just the people here, it's ten times the people here who aren't here, I can assure you.
And we're, we as all elected officials sitting here hear you, as Alan, Alan said earlier. All right, come on, we gotta go suffer here in a little bit.
I think to sum up everything that we've all talked about here tonight, is that I don't think many of us have an aversion to the money that each of these apartments are asking for, I don't think it's unreasonable by and large. That's not the problem, the problem is that we, the taxpayers, not the apartment dwellers, The problem is that we, the taxpayers, not the apartment dwellers, we're paying for the bills. And yet, we don't have enough commercial industry coming in to grow our community to help us. And so, whose problem is it that we're not growing our community? Is it the commissioners, or is it the city?
Both.
It's, it's everybody combined.
Well, how can we, as the citizens of Pickens County, help you help us? Because we can't fight the rest of us.
We have, we have partnered with the city to hire this individual that has done a great job bringing this in.
When did he get hired?
Pardon?
When was he hired?
He was hired, uh, four years ago, I believe.
Four years? Four years ago?
You might want to get a new one.
You got, you got to start from the ground up, and you got to get, get the process.
I just wanted to clarify, did you say that you'll be voting on this budget after the next meeting?
7:15.
So the meetings with the department heads, which are going to take place October 17 through the 19th, that we're invited to, what's the purpose of that?
We're not, we're not voting on the budget, we're just voting on the military.
All right, I have one question.
Hard before the hard?
It's for the 2016 budget.
16. One other question, can you be specific, and maybe print in the paper, exactly what has to be done to deal with the school tax issue? Because I have been told that you have responded that we have to deal with the school district on that issue. I'm, I'm ignorant. I don't know how it starts. But we've been talking to Tom Graves about this, when he left, you know, he, he thought maybe he would deal with this issue or try to help us. I think most of us feel like nothing is being done towards implementing a process to get some relief on the school tax for us seniors, because we're going to be moving out of here and going to Cherokee, going to Gilmore County, going to Cobb County, going to Dawson County, because we're getting fed up with how, you know, not being addressed.
Well, I, I just have a question too, though. Let's flip it on the other end. I'd like to, for the seniors, you know, and my father is one of the people that's most passionate about getting an exemption, because my dad's 72 years old, but I guess my question is, what solution do the senior citizens offer my generation, who are going to, hold on, let me, can I please finish? What solution do you offer me, as the person who's going to assume your portion of the school taxes? And granted, let me say this, okay, I don't have children in this school system at all, because I don't have children. So I, but I don't, I've never complained about paying my, paying my share of school taxes, because I realize that these kids that are out here in school right now, every time that school bus passes by my house, I realize they're the next ones that are working at Piedmont, taking care of me. They're the next ones that are going to be educating the next generation. So my question is, I'm, I'm totally open to your suggestion as a senior citizen on a fixed income, but I need you to give me a solution, how are you going to encumber me with the taxation that you're not paying anymore? And you need to remember that a large majority of the population in Pickens County are senior citizens. We have a higher senior citizen demographic than Cherokee County does. So my question is, just tell me how I'm going to pay it. Well, they're, they have tons of issues. So I want to know, what do you, what do you expect me to do?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, if I may, if I may, this, let the young lady speak. Yeah, I understand.
It sounds like you want to pay someone.
Whoa, 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 timeout, timeout, guys.
Okay. Going back to getting businesses in here, I know my son-in-law used to work for the Chamber of Commerce in Chattanooga. He got Volkswagen to go in up there. I mean, it seems like that, does the Chamber of Commerce do anything like that for us? I know we have one. I think the problem is, we're being overwhelmed by all this money, and we're not getting as much money as we could get if we got businesses in here, if we got, you know, I don't know if it's right or not, but I was told Chick-fil-A wanted to come in here, and they were denied. Was that true?
I can't speak to that. They met with the city.
That is correct. I mean, we can't, what is businesses like that?
I will say that I know that the seniors, the tax thing, in the other counties, might, you might get a tax break, but you're also moving into an area where the crime rate is going to be outrageous. So you're moving into a higher crime area, so it's a trade-off.
I'll give you, let, let, go ahead, sir.
All right, couple of questions about, there's some other departments that we haven't discussed yet, that I want to know what they want money for, before we start making decisions. We haven't heard anything from fire EMS, what do they want, 190-something thousand, I think?
Sloan, you want to break, break yours down real quick? We're going to wrap this thing up.
Fire EMS.
So what are we paying?
Road Department?
We're going to pay more to send them down.
What is interdevelopmental government? Well, they need to take a loan.
I didn't realize I was going to be speaking today, but, so I'm going to have to shoot a little bit from the hip. The biggest majority of mine is the insurance.
Excuse me, Chief Loyd, Chief, you just said you wouldn't, weren't expecting to speak today on a budget meeting?
This is not a budget meeting, this is military.
But it's about his budget for the tax increase. Why would he not come prepared this evening with them?
Uh, hold on a good second. When I have my budget meeting, y'all are more than welcome to come. That's in October, when I meet with them, okay? This is talking about a military rate increase.
I understand, but you're going to get a portion of, correct?
Yes.
So you should have something, not just off your hip.
That's kind of what I'm asking.
But something that is there that we can look at and justify the military rate increase, is what I'm asking for. Tell me what, what is it that you're. That man, that man right there, the sheriff right there, just put it out there, as to what he needs and what he wants, and what he's going to do away with and whatnot, and you are going to shoot off your hip. It's unacceptable to me.
Well, good. He did.
Well, that's the wrong answer, good.
Hey, I'd be glad to meet with y'all. I didn't realize I was elected official.
I put him on the spot, just, just come when we have his budget here, but the majority of his budget is, is salaries, if we get that, if we will get that C modified plan in there. I'm assuming it's probably his insurance increase that he's got for EMTs, plus what he's having to pay for the state for running EMT and paramedics on his ambulance services.
And he also has, are you budgeting for two ambulance remounts also?
Yeah, we've got two ambulance remounts we're having swap out.
I think one frustration is, you're going to vote on the military rate before the departments justify what they're asking for.
That's like Obamacare, where if you want to vote, then you got to vote it in.
Read it, read it.
That's right.
And that's the thing is, you can't read it, because they haven't made it yet.
Yeah, we're saying that.
And I think what, some of the problems that we're having, this young gentleman over here, he's mentioning at the jail department, we see these numbers, it's what I talked about earlier, we see a lot of gaudy numbers, a lot of big numbers being thrown out, and none of that's getting to the people that are doing the work. You know, it seems like it's all going to the people that are shooting. And the problem is, we got, now we have a jail facility that's 10, 13 years old, whatever the case may be, that's really 400 years old. The problem that we're having is, the facility has been neglected for so long, and now you're dropping a big bomb on everybody, because you haven't taken care of it up to this point. And now you're dumping in the lap, and everybody's sitting here saying, well, you got to do it now, because if it doesn't get done now, the sky's going to fall. The sky's going to fall, and the sky is not going to fall. Now, what I want to know is, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, you just, you jumped on to your name first, for everybody, so, and yours.
But I will, as much as the jail, we'll take a look.
Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking at is, when you got, when you've got by your own figure, $600,000 a year, 150 grand a month coming in, plus, you know, whatever you're getting ready to ask for here on top, all right, what's going to go to this gentleman over here that's paying 13 bucks an hour, to get spit on by some degenerate inmate that got over here and brought you to Verizon store to pay 5 grand, is that's it. You know, I, that's what I think everybody really has the problem with. The problem too, is that it's causing infighting here, when the issue seems to be that nobody took care of it before we got here. So what, what do we have? What guarantee do I have, as a property owner in this county and with the city, what guarantee do I have that property's now going to go up to this percentage, and then we're going to be nice and fat for five years, and then all of a sudden, we're going to get a 20% increase on it? Where does it stop? Like, where, where does it stop? What, what is the final, who stops the bug? You know what I'm saying?
You know, I'm sort of him as far as that's the last link, that's the bush hog, and, you know, the jail and stuff. I mean, some of that, I mean, you said it was 1999, well, I mean, it should have been budgeted into the splash money to, I mean, that's what we try to, you know, raise the splash money for, is to keep the race back.
It's unacceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, ma'am.